With our evening part of the county commission meeting, and if you weren't here earlier, we want to welcome you to that. Today, we have kind of a special presentation from our youth advisory committee, and I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Peters for the introduction, and then we'll go on with, we have four public hearings after that. Go ahead, Commissioner Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am pleased to introduce our executive team for the YAC Committee. They had a busy, busy year again, just like last year, and after kind of recuperating from COVID and getting all organized again, they did an outstanding job, both virtually and in person. They met twice as much as they normally meet. They were meeting twice a month versus once a month. They will talk about their projects. They did more community service, I think, than they've ever done before, and their work on mental health has continued from last year to this year, and I'm quite impressed with what they've done. Last year was amazing, but this year was absolutely amazing. So, we have some seniors here that won't be coming back. So, definitely, if you are leaving, which I believe all of you are leaving, be sure to let us know what school you're going to go to. Okay? Thanks. And they'll introduce themselves.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Welcome, all three of you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Well, hi. My name is Madeline Marcos, and I'm the chairman of the Youth Advisory Committee, and I just wanted to thank you all today for giving us your time and presenting. I know the last time we spoke was January 23rd, so it's kind of been a few months since then. So, we just wanted to give you an insight of what we've been doing since then. So, here's our agenda for today for our second YAC update of 2021. First, we have our education meetings and a little information about how those went down this year. Second, we have our subcommittee update, and then third, we have our Mental Health Month update. As I previously stated, my name is Madeline Marcos, and since you all want to know where we're going, because we're not seniors, we're recent graduates, I'll be attending the University of Florida in the spring of 2022.
Congratulations.
My name is Dylan Van, and I will be attending the University of Florida. As some of you guys know, I attended CCC in high school, so I'm really excited. I start in the fall.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ella North. I unfortunately have not been able to meet you guys for the past two meetings, so I wanted to give a little background on myself. So, I've run for secretary for the past two years for this YAC, and then previously, I served in my Colorado, which is where I'm from, their YAC for about three years, and then I'm currently serving as your Miss Florida High School USA. And the reason why I bring that up is because in our interview portion and on our resume, I had put down that I was trained in youth mental health first aid, which was provided to me, the opportunity was by YAC, and I had the opportunity to talk about it in my personal interview with our panel of judges and explain how mental health has impacted my life, and then also our youth's life, and bring up how important it was to further our education about mental health.
Beautiful.
And I am also a recent graduate, and I'm going to be going to SBC for my first two years, get my associates, and hopefully transfer to UF.
Beautiful. Congratulations to all three of you. That's awesome.
Thank you.
So, our educational meetings for this year, two examples of the ones that we had this spring. March 3rd, we had our Mental Health World Cafe, which was just a really relaxed and comfortable environment to promote discussion about mental health and how we can improve it for our youth. And up there, we have examples of the rules that we had just to make it more comforting and relaxed for everyone. And our second example up there we had was we had the opportunity to talk to Congressman Charlie Crist, and he gave us an overview of what was going on in Congress and what bills and grants were going to be coming up for a vote. And there, we have examples of the questions that were asked in our Mental Health World Cafe. We had some volunteers work and kind of oversee what we were doing. Those are two questions that we had asked. What concerns you about mental illness, and then what experiences do you have with mental health in your community? And you can see how our committee members had answered those, and it just shows you how important mental health is to us.
So, as some of you know, we've kind of broken up into subcommittees in our total committee. And so, kind of our three committees are marketing, programs, and community service. I am the chairman of the programs committee. Maddie is involved in the community service committee, and Ella is in the marketing committee. And so, we had some kind of big things that have happened since the last time we kind of addressed you guys. We decided on making ourselves have a new logo, and it's not an official, but it's an official/unofficial logo, which I'm sure you guys are familiar with. But, we kind of crafted it, we kind of opened it up to the rest of YAC and had a little bit of a competition, and this is the one that came out as our winner. I really like it. I think the trees kind of symbolize people coming through YAC, starting as freshmen, or starting as freshmen and kind of growing up and graduating and becoming seniors, which is something that's really kind of been an experience for me. I started in my 11th grade year, and then I'm graduating now, and I really do feel like I've kind of grown up here, and it's been a lot of fun. So. And then, the programs committee, we did, we kind of put on and organized the whole mental health month and the seminars and the speakers. So, that was a lot of fun. I kind of got to talk to a bunch of different people and kind of organize, recruit, and that kind of thing, which was kind of a new experience for me. And then, community service, as Commissioner Peters said, we've done more of it this year than we have in the past years, and honestly, it has been a lot of fun. We've had some wild experiences, and it's been part of my favorite. It's been some of, because you really kind of feel that kind of glow when you help someone else out, and it's really kind of that small thing, but it's really kind of made a big impact on me and then hopefully the people we've helped.
Next, I want to speak on all of the community and volunteer opportunities that we have had since we last spoke in January. We've had the opportunity of still attending the 4H Farm Days at Woodland Academy. We've had the opportunity to, you know, be in the contest of 4H at public speaking, photography, and graphic design. We also did a beach cleanup in March at Gandy Beach with Keep Pinellas Beautiful, as we can see that little picture on the side there. And then, currently, we can still have these options available to all of you and everybody else in the audience. There's youth and/or adult mental health first aid training offered by the Directions for Living, and they're free for all Pinellas County residents. Next, I have some photos showing all of our, you know, involvement in the community. We have some flyers there at the bottom. We have a picture in the middle that I really want to speak about, because as some of you already know, our committee since last year has been a committee of firsts, and this year, we are the first committee to actually have something that we call the YAC picnic. This was our last meeting, and we were able to all get together, socialize, you know, really kind of fold over what we've done throughout YAC and how it's helped us in our lives and how we've been involved in ourselves and in the community. And I hope this stays as a legacy throughout YAC, because it really helps me understand more of the students who were in YAC, including myself, and I was really able to grow and, you know, know more people from that.
And so, this is kind of our big project, the Mental Health Month, and so, we kind of took advantage of the National Mental Health Month being May. And so, last year, we had proclaimed that August would be the Mental Health Month, but because we were all seniors and things were really going to start kicking up in August, we figured getting it done in May right around exams, especially right as kind of COVID was kind of coming to an end, as much as an end as you can maybe say it is. And so, that was a really kind of, it worked to our advantage to kind of hold it in May. And so, we did 15-minute interviews. We asked questions. They presented, and it was a great experience. We had a bunch of different people kind of present. And so, we had Matt Fay, Heidi Joliffe, and Becky Albert with Max Reed. And so, I personally really like Matt Fay. He's one of my favorites to hear and to interact with, and he kind of helped us kind of just stay toward really kind of something simple, which is not something you would think, okay, well, he's going to come present. He's going to present something kind of complex, but it was really a simple idea, which a lot of people really have trouble with, which is kind of de-escalating situations and working towards a progressive compromise. And so, he kind of was saying things with like I-statements and things like that, which I really thought were interesting and helpful. I kind of asked him if there was anything going into kind of the education system, or maybe this could be a class or just kind of assembly where kids kind of learned, hey, this is a great way to communicate. This is a way to make progress in things that you're involved in. So, I really enjoyed that. Heidi Joliffe, she presented us with that top picture on the right, which is kind of more statistical side, kind of opened you up to, this is how we are as a whole. And when you look at those statistics, they're, one, kind of scary, but, two, also, you know that there's also so many kids who have not been diagnosed, who are not in that statistic, which are still kind of dealing with those issues. And then Becky and Max, they were both really good speakers. We learned about adverse childhood events, and really kind of how that kind of thing can impact somebody's future, not just for their childhood as they grow up, but really for their entirety of their lives. And so, that was really interesting. They talked about something which is an A score, which is the number of adverse childhood events that someone goes through. And so, I found that personally very interesting, and the statistics and the way that it ended up playing out for people in the future way down the road as it kind of impacted them from their childhood.
All righty. So, that concludes our presentation. However, before we finish, we want to give off a big thank you, because this is our last time speaking to you guys as an executive board, to kind of an executive board to you guys. But, we wanted to give a big thank you to Commissioner Peters. We wanted to give a big thank you to all of you guys, and we wanted to give a big thank you to the attorney's office for answering all of our emails and all of our questions about everything that has to do with government and just, you know, being a committee as a whole. So, if you guys want to know more details about what we have previously done and what we're going to do, like our upcoming events, you guys can go on our social media platforms that were listed on that last slide, but we just wanted to give you guys a big thank you.
And now that they wrapped up, I also want to mention the 4H. The 4H has been an outstanding partner, and Alyssa's been, you know, critical working with Ashley and myself. And they, on your desk, you all got a booklet about mental health, and this is a 4H. You did not get one. Okay. Well, I have one. I'm happy to pass it around, and we'll make sure everybody gets one. This is a booklet that 4H and the extension is now using for everyone in their 4H club, and it's really great. So, not only is our youth advisory committee choosing mental health as a high priority for their generation, it seems to be going worldwide under lots of organizations. So, I'll make sure this gets passed around and everyone gets one. Thanks.
Since you all three are leaving, what have you done for succession planning? Who's going to take your place? And do we have a lot of folks that are increasingly interested in YAC? Have you sensed that at all over the last few years?
Okay, I'll go ahead. Yeah, we definitely spoke about this yesterday before we even came, but we've noticed that there are a few, you know, highlights throughout YAC, and, you know, you kind of see people's strengths and weaknesses as we move on through our community service projects and just our thought process of what our long-term and short-term service projects are going to be. But, I definitely think there's an increased volume in the members who want to attend YAC, as you guys probably know, you've had to waive the amount of students who go into YAC several times already. And I hope that that continues, because it shows that the youth wants to be more active in the community and that they actually want to make a difference and, you know, say what they want to say. So, yeah.
And what about on the mental health side for, you know, kids in high school? What do you see as that number-one challenge, and how is that opening up as far as access for them to get to mental health counseling?
All righty. So, I'll speak a little bit on this one, and then I'll hand it over to Ella and Dylan, because I know they have something to say on this, too. But, I definitely know that we've made an impact on schools and making resources available, as Dylan was explaining our long-term service project, how we had those Zooms with one-on-one counselors, and we gave them the opportunities publicly noticed onto how to, you know, help cope with what they're dealing with. And we know those statistics are rising with mental health, and just to heads up, Commissioner Peters, Nora, Ashley, or Alyssa helped us come up with the topic of mental health. We did this on our own. But, we definitely wanted to put out there how important it is to take care of one's mental health, because you can't take care of anything else without taking care of yourself. So, on that question, I'm going to hand it over to Ella and Dylan.
So, one thing that I've certainly noticed is it's become more of a conversation. It's not as much of a touchy subject that people don't want to talk about. It's still touchy, obviously, but it's certainly become less, even in just my high school kind of experience from freshman to being a senior. And it seems like it's something people are more willing to talk about. It's something people recognize as an issue, not something that people kind of blow off of, hey, that's not really a thing, whatever. But, it really has become more of a conversational issue that people are willing to talk about, and they're willing to reach out more so now than ever, especially to friends. Something that I've noticed is that people are a lot more willing to reach out to their friends, more so than their parents, I would say, but definitely to their friends about, hey, I'm not feeling that great. And it doesn't have to like involve words like depression, anxiety, but it certainly can, and those have certainly become more prevalent and more, like, it happens more often, I would say.
Thank you.
So, a little background on me is that I started my freshman year at a school in Colorado for high school, and then junior year, I had moved here and started junior to senior. I recently graduated. But, I will say that the conversation around mental health in Colorado was much different than it was here. There was way more stigma, and that might have just been, you know, through the years, we've gotten less desensitized to talking about it, and like Dylan said, I think it's much more of a conversation now. I can tell you, in like day-to-day, I talk about mental health pretty often, and I think that what YAC is doing, and since we're educating about 30 students every time we have these resources come out, then they're going into our community and just spreading that knowledge, and I think that's what's really making a big difference. And even on social media, I think that mental health has become a huge topic, and I think if we continue that, then it'll just become a really big topic, and even in like youth to discuss.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Appreciate your thoughtful responses. Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you all, and best wishes next year, and congratulations on your schools that you're going to, and, you know, just have fun and enjoy your experience in college.
Thank you very much, guys. It was nice working with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we have four public hearings this evening, and I'll go over to Kat to get us started with item 32.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item number 32 is case number Z-LU-21-02. This is an application of Canada 2014 LLC for a zoning change from R4, 1, 2, and 3 family residential to E2, employment 2, and a land use change from residential urban to commercial general. Since this is a quasi-judicial hearing, all those individuals who plan to speak on this item must be sworn in. For those wishing to speak, if able, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, signify by saying I do. The public hearing was properly advertised, and an affidavit of publication has been received for filing. One letter and one email in opposition has been received. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Okay. Barry, and Board, what's your wishes? You want a presentation on this item? Go ahead.
I just had one quick question on it. I don't need a full presentation, though.
Okay. Come on up, Glenn.
Yeah, this is Glenn, if he can come up.
Good evening. Glenn Bailey, zoning manager.
Thank you, sir. Is this the property that we're discussing today, is it the same owner as the adjacent property?
No, it's not.
Okay. Because I thought we had changed the zoning on that adjacent property not that long ago.
Right. You changed that to office back in 2019. It's a separate owner.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Glenn? Okay. Did the applicant have anything that they wanted to bring forward?
Good evening. Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, Number 4, 51 St. Petersburg. Now, just to make you aware that the LPA unanimously approved this application, as you know, your staff is supporting the application. Be happy to go through a full presentation if you'd like, or answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. All right. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Long, and a second by Commissioner Gerard. This is a public hearing. Do we need to ask for any public comments, or do we have any?
I do not have anybody who has pre-registered.
That's kind of what I was asking. Thank you. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 33.
Mr. Chair, agenda item number 33 is case number Z-LU-21-03. This is an application from Habitat for Humanity of Pinellas County Incorporated for a zoning change from C2, which is general commercial and services, to R3, which is single-family residential, and a land use change from commercial neighborhood to residential low. This is another quasi-judicial hearing, so all those individuals who plan on speaking on this item must be sworn in. For those wishing to speak, if you could, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, signify by saying I do. The public hearing was properly advertised. An affidavit of publication has been received for filing. No correspondence has been received, and the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Okay. You've got, you have the introduction. Any questions or any preference for a presentation on this item? Do I have a motion? Make her the motion, Commissioner Gerard, and Commissioner Long on the second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 34.
All right. Mr. Chair, agenda item number 34 is case number, it's a zoning case, Z-O-N-21-03. This is an application of Z and N Properties, the sixth LLC formerly known as Belcher Place LLC, for a zoning change from GO, which is general office, to R5CO, which is urban residential conditional overlay, with the conditional overlay limiting the number of residential units to 10, single-family attached dwellings, and it also includes a termination of a development agreement. Again, this is another quasi-judicial hearing. I promise this is the last time. So, all those who plan to speak on this item must be sworn in. For those wishing to speak, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, signify by saying I do. All right. The public hearing was properly advertised. An affidavit of publication has been received for filing. One letter of no objection has been received from the city of Clearwater. No correspondence has been received, and the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Thank you. Again, any questions on this item or a preference for a presentation? Motion by Commissioner Long for approval, who's second, from Commissioner Seal. Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 35.
Mr. Chair, agenda item number 35 is case number FLU-21-01. This is an application of Boulevard Park Properties LLC for a land use change from residential low to residential high. The public hearing was properly advertised. An affidavit of publication has been received for filing. No correspondence has been received, and the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Okay. Any questions on item 34? Any preference for a presentation, or do I have Board? Commissioner Peters on the motion for approval. Board? Commissioner Peters on the motion for approval, Commissioner Long on the second. All right, no questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I think, I think that was it. Anything else for the good of the Lord? Barry, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, we are adjourned.